The time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent known, was provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner. Pursuing to the provisions of NJSA ten four six, et cetera, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice was posted in Town Hall and the Township's website by notification to newspapers on December twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, of the schedule for two thousand and twenty-two, and by providing notice to the Township clerk.
Thank you. So please rise to salute the flag.
Okay, roll call. Jumana Culligan is gonna be late. Tracy Katz Levine here. Andrew Morgan is gonna be late. Michael Parlovecchio is absent. Ashley Schultz is absent. Richard Wasserman. Steven Weiner.
Here.
Jesse Momen for Alex.
Here.
Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Here.
Okay, and we now need for someone to make a motion to nominate Steven Weiner as our chair at this meeting, being that Michael is out.
Motion. Actually, I'm sorry. Steve can serve as the role chair. You can't take a motion. You don't have a court for formal action. So.
Okay.
By all means, you'll serve in the capacity of chair, and we can call for such a motion at the time we have a court.
Perfect.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Our new mics? So I can read our Sid mission statement as we do for every meeting to remind everybody. "The purpose of the Special Improvement District is to promote, grow, and support local businesses, property owners, residents, and visitors." Milburn Township Sid ordinance designates a district management corporation whose mission is to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of Milburn Township through increased marketing and visibility, improved and renewed infrastructure, and local business development and engagement." That brings us to approval of the minutes.
We have to defer that.
Yeah, we'll defer that. Yep. So Mr. Cooper, Ryan, could our attorney?
So I'm gonna administer the oath. This is among our first times thinking.
We wait for that. Sorry to interrupt. Should we wait for that for Jumana and Andrew as well?
Do we just be Jumana, so we can do it later? Why don't we just do this?
Okay.
So given we have the opportunity to be together for the first time in person for two thousand and twenty-two, I thought I would administer the oath to those members who have not already taken it, so that would excuse Ms. Castlin, who has already taken the oath of office, and I can administer the oath to anyone who's not present today after, before they can have it administered separately. So you have a copy of the oath in front of you. I'm gonna ask you in a moment to raise your right hand. I'll read the oath. I'll ask you to repeat after me. Just a couple things I'm gonna highlight for you. You'll see in the oath, and you'll hear me say, you have the choice of either swearing or affirming. So I will say swear or affirm. You need only choose which one you will do. Similarly, at the end of the oath, you have the option of saying, "So help me God," or not. I will read, "So help me God." If you choose to say so, that's fine. You opt. As a matter of conscience, not, the oath will still be valid. So I'm just gonna flag that for all of you now. Yes.
Of course, I'm elected official. Why do I do this also?
So you have been sworn in as an officer of the governing body. I would recommend taking the oath again as in your capacity as trustee. So you know, belts and suspenders, dots and crosses for our I's and T's.
More than ever.
So, all right, if there's no other questions, I'll administer the oath, and I'll ask you all to raise your right hand, please. Thank you. I state your name.
Yeah, I'm Steven Weiner.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
and to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
and in this state under the authority of the people.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm
I do further solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
perform all the duties of the office of Milburn Short Hills Business Organization, Inc., Board of Trustees.
Of the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization, Inc., Board of Trustees.
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations. You've all been sworn.
So we'll all sign this and give it to.
Give it to me?
Yep.
Also, just as a little bit more housekeeping, at the end of the meeting, I need you to return these conflict of interest forms, which are also required. You've been provided at the previous meeting with the actual text, but since we were in person, I don't require. Please return those two documents to me before the end of the meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Ryan, you're back up actually with our attorney's report.
Sure, thank you. I'll pull it from here if that's comfortable or I can do the podium. So my only report for this evening, I do want to make a statement for the benefit of the Board of Trustees, perhaps for certain members of the public. I understand there have been repeated questions for general information put to the Executive Director and the Board. I just wanted to clarify, one, a lot of those inquiries pertain to matters that are or have threatened to be matters of litigation. My parties were represented by counsel, and so it would obviously be unadvisable to respond to them. I also wanted to reiterate that as a public body, this body will respond to public records requests and may request, may respond to inquiries made during public comment, as it so chooses. But beyond that, there is certainly not an obligation to respond to every single question or query for any piece of information from the mundane to the profane. So there will not be further responses or answers to every single question that's put, whether it's to the Executive Director or to the Board. And so you want to let the Board know that I'm happy to address any questions and make that statement.
Any questions on the board? Thank you, Ryan. This is the fun part of the meeting. We have some local businesses represented tonight, and I guess they're gonna come up and introduce themselves, maybe mention where you're located and what the brief description of your business. Is Ryan Gilbert here for C2?
Yes.
Yep, you could step up to the podium, please. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. First and foremost, thank you guys for having me here today. I'm here on behalf of C2 Education. The company itself has been providing academic solutions for students for about twenty years or so. I myself have been in education management for about six or seven years, but with C2 Education overseeing centers in northern New Jersey and New York for about two years or so. In terms of the different types of services that C2 Education offers, we do work with students in grades K through twelve, meeting their needs with where they are. On academics resources, we also support them with standardized testing, college essays. We're an all-in-one inclusive company. Outside of that, we do offer different resources to the community as well. I've coordinated testing events with local high schools. I've coordinated with local libraries as well. We actually do have one coming up in another couple of weeks or so for AP exam season, which is shortly around the corner, too. One of our senior teachers and official will be giving a presentation to talk about the AP exams on President's Day. I have a couple flyers here. I'd be having to hand those out to anyone here that's interested as well. And outside of that, I mean, I don't know if anyone has any questions.
I guess, do I give your address? Where are you located?
So we're on seven thirty, Short Hills Turnpike. So we're right in that same shopping plaza. There's a Panera Bread in there. We're right next to the place I usually go to. There's also bagels for you a little bit further down, too. So right down.
Excellent. Thank you. And yeah, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. You can put your flyers just on the table there. Yeah. I'm just really glad I'm past my AP test years. That brings back bad memories for. I didn't have the C2 services to help, I guess. Is John Lynch here? Tiger Shalman?
Yes. All right, good evening, everybody. My name is John Lynch. It's my partner Jimmy Rivera. We represent Tiger Shalman's Mixed Martial Arts. We're gonna be opening a new location here in the Milburn Short Hills area, five thirty-one Milburn Avenue. So just to tell you a little bit about Tiger Shalman's Mixed Martial Arts, we're the largest martial arts organization in the country. We service children and adults. Our programs are age-specific and appropriate. We start from the young age of preschool and work our way all the way into our programs. Our children's program is based on learning self-defense to build confidence in children. And then we also teach them self-discipline through what we call non-putting spirit, to never give up to accomplish everything that they start. Our adult program is also based, obviously, on self-defense with a little bit of fitness involved. So you can get in really great shape while you're learning something. We all know the key to getting in great shape is to do something that you love or something that is an interest, so it's more like a lifestyle change. And that's something that you can achieve at Tiger Shalman's Mixed Martial Arts. So that's part of our program that we do with children and adults. We also service the community in different ways. We have a new law enforcement program called the Guardian Program. Jimmy can talk a little bit more. He's one of the founders of the Guardian Program. We work with the law enforcement.
Yeah, we service them. We started a guardian programs for police officers, teaching, what's it called? I'm sorry.
I didn't know you were gonna have me speak.
Basically, hands-on, right? When you have someone like a suspect and they don't want to be placed under arrest, we don't want officers to resort to their taser or O.C. spray. We want them to be able to defend themselves. Plus, an officer that knows how to defend himself, just like a female or male knows how to defend himself, he'd walk around with a different confidence. It's really a big thing. You know, at the time when I had my school in New York City, one of the big things going around was a knockout game, and we actually had a lot of adults come in even more about that, spread awareness. Besides what we do with the guardian law enforcement training that we're teaching, we also do for free a bully-proof seminar that we do for the public for free, a woman-safe seminar, and a child-safe seminar as well. That's free to the public, so you know, we'll be in contact with Steve, so we get as many people to come in to participate. So this way, they're aware, especially in, you know, October's bullet prevention month. We try to do a woman-safe once or twice a year, and a child-safe at least once a year as well. So we offer that as well. I think that's pretty much it.
Add it into it?
When will you be open?
Within the next two weeks.
Right. Wow. Great.
Yeah, so we look forward to serving the community in the area, and if you guys have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Are you gonna have an opening up?
Yeah, we plan, we plan, yeah.
So long, Steve.
We're always looking for courts.
Oh, yeah. Welcome. Welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. And Jean Toombaga of SLT My Skin.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for having me. Thank you, Steve, for inviting me. I own a skincare studio at forty-six Milburn. It's right next to Sakura. And I also have facials for adults, teens, and kids. And with kids, what I do with them is kind of get them started on skincare and just kind of protecting their skin. And I do education on sun protection. So hopefully during the summertime, I can work with the library to do a few sessions and kind of give them education on sun care to help them get prepared for the summertime. And I'm also developing a self-care program directly, specifically for healthcare workers, nurses, and doctors, to kind of help them relax and kind of like treat themselves after the last two years. I think they need taking care of instead of them taking care of everybody else. So I'm developing that program. Hopefully, I can work with local offices here and be able to offer that service to them.
Are you open already?
Yeah, I've been open quietly for the last couple months. I had a nine-to-five job, so now I'm not there anymore. So I'm focused here.
Did I miss where you located?
Forty-six Milburn. It's right next to Sakura.
Okay, okay. I always think of mask me, you know, from wearing these masks.
Yeah, I get a lot of clients that have acne, so they ask for help.
Sure.
So fine.
Yeah, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bring us to our public comments.
I think we should do.
Oh.
Yeah, we can do our motion now. Sorry, now that we have a court. Okay, so can we have a motion to have Steven be serving as chair? Okay. I think one second.
Oh, I didn't.
Okay, all right. So let's do the vote. Among those are here. Jumana Culligan.
Yes.
Yeah, voice votes.
A voice vote. Okay, all in favor. Steven, you're the chair.
All right. Thank you. I'm legit. And let's go back. Let's go back to the approval of the minutes while we're voting on things. Get that out of the way. So I hear a motion. This is for minutes from January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting.
Motion.
Any second? We need a roll call vote?
Yes.
Jumana Culligan?
Yes.
Tracy Katz Levine? Yes, Andrew is still not on, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Richard Wasserman?
Yeah.
Steven Weiner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think is Aaron Ryan here as well from Common Lot? We wanna, there he is. Would you like to come up and speak? You're gonna talk about, should we talk about liquor licenses? I think that's the topic.
You're gonna be public comments.
Oh, in public comments? You got it. Okay. So that does bring us to the public comments section of the meeting. And when invited to speak, please come to the lectern here, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded.
The young lady from March fourth has asked to speak first.
Yeah, yep. Whenever an audience or committee member reads from a prepared statement, please remember to provide a copy to Tracy at the email address given. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Those who wish to participate in the meetings may do so in person with possible occupancy limits or electronically by phone or computer via Zoom. Individuals calling in will be able to fully participate in the meeting during the appropriate public comment periods. And I do see we have several people on Zoom tonight. So yes, we have, first speaker is Rebecca Dranikoff from March fourth.
Hi, so my name is Rebecca Dranikoff. I live at three nineteen Forest Drive South. First, I'd like to thank Steve and the committee for letting me tell you about our fifth annual March fourth five K for colon cancer prevention. That's coming up soon on March sixth, right here in Milburn. So before I talk about the event, I wanted to give you a little bit of background information. On March fourth of two thousand and sixteen, my mom passed away from colon cancer at the age of forty-eight. And when she passed, one of my mom's close friends, Naomi Panzer, told us that it was almost fitting that she passed on March fourth, because that's what she wanted us to do, to March fourth, move forward. So one, the year after she died, my brother and my sister and my dad and our family and friends started the March fourth five K for colon cancer prevention. And over the years, we've had hundreds of people come out. Every year, we've raised over three hundred thousand dollars. And this year, we're also happy to have the help of the Milburn High School Kids Against Cancer Club working with us. I would also like to thank the Milburn businesses, like the Cedar Factory and the Deli for their support and the businesses that let us put up flyers around town. So the event this year will be held on Sunday, March sixth, on Brookside Drive. It's a five K run or walk, and we also added a dog walk after the five K. Yeah, you can sign up at marchfourth.org, fourth as in the number, so F-O-U-R-T-H. But most importantly, even if you aren't signing up and you're not donating, we want you to get yourself screened for colon cancer, because the reality is that colon cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in the U.S., but it isn't well-known or really spoken about. Over fifty-five thousand people in two thousand and twenty-two will die from colon cancer, and most of them would be alive if they would get screened on time. So if you didn't get screened already and you're forty-five or older, go out and get yourself screened, because it could save your life. So we hope that you would come out on Sunday, March sixth, on Brookside Drive with your friends and your family and your dogs to support us.
What time is it?
It's at nine AM.
Nine AM.
Rebecca, quick, thank you so much for coming. Quick question. Did I understand that you are also putting together like some little goodie bags or something? Is there an opportunity for merchants to?
Yeah, there is. We have, you can sponsor us. We have, on our website, we have our page with the sponsorship document. You can give us certificates or gift cards or whatever you want. You can probably put them in what we're giving out. This year, we're gonna give out tote bags with the logo, and we have some dog giveaways as well. So if you'd be interested in sponsoring us, we really appreciate that. We have that information on the website.
So if you want to repeat the website, please.
Yeah, marchfourth.org, F-O-U-R-T-H.
Thank you so much.
And there's a, there's a number of groups similar to this that have been approaching us over the last couple of months, and we're super happy to support and get the word out. And so I'm actually just waiting for their team to provide us with some marketing collateral, and then we're gonna be providing that to all the merchants and hopefully get you some more donations. So thank you for asking us to participate. We're happy to do it.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess, with Aaron? Yep, Aaron Ryan?
Hi, good evening. I'm actually Brendan Ryan. I'm the owner of Twenty-seven Main Street.
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's, this is Aaron, my son. So we just wanted to quickly talk about getting the town support in an initiative on liquor license reform in the state. So, you know, we've built Common Lot. It's a landmark destination restaurant for the state and have invested heavily in the town. We are very vested in the activities of the Sid and what Steve is doing, and we support it. But we've also been very active over the last year trying to overhaul the state's liquor license laws. We've drafted a bill. We have legislative support for it. It's not gonna go anywhere, of course, but but we are now working with the Restaurant Association and various towns to look at a compromise bill. And that's the purpose of the quick discussion today. In one of the initiatives that is being put into one of the bills or potentially put into one of the bills is to exclude liquor licenses, full licenses, that are being used by retail malls from the calculation of the license allocation for a town. Now, in the case of Melbourne, that would be four or maybe even five licenses that would be released. It doesn't impact the mall, because they would retain those licenses. But the rationale, of course, is that the licenses are restricted by population. That has a bigger demographic than the town itself and the lot. So we are gathering a number of towns to support this and the Restaurant Association and other interested groups. And we need Melbourne to get behind this initiative so that we're able to release these licenses into the existing business community, attract additional investment into the town, and have no adverse effects on the existing license holders in the mall. And so that would lead to additional investment. We've spoken to the people that own the block next to us, the vacant block at two seven. There is an interest in working within the master plan to redevelop that site. I'm out of time, but that's where the license.
Thirty seconds.
So, so if we were able to get this and the licenses were able to be utilized in the town, it would bring additional investment into Melbourne downtown. It would support a number of existing restaurants and hospitality centers in the town and lead to the redevelopment and kicking off the redevelopment of Essex Street by going down that part, because that's three lots where we would be able to redevelop the lot.
Okay.
That was the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room like to speak?
May I take my mask off? Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Phil, living in Alexander Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey. I wish he was here, because March fourth is my son's birthday. So, you know, cosmic connections here. I don't know where to begin. The principle of our government is robust and informed civic participation in a fair marketplace of competing ideas. You heard prior, I wish Mr. Parlovecchio was here, because he explained the different policy from our county commissioners as to, I understand you don't like to answer questions at the meeting, but there is a time when an answer has to be given. The reason I say this, I sent you a package. I showed you the GIF models ordinance about civic participation. I've showed you our civil rights policy. I'm still waiting to respond whether one of your members violated by saying, "I file frivolous litigation." I've not had a response. Tonight, we're gonna hear about vacancy rates. The issue is the validity of this ordinance under state law. That issue has never been resolved, never opinioned been given by any attorney. It's our, I believe in our needs, because today is the one-year anniversary where you retained Ryan Gleason, who only lasted less than a month as the Sid Executive Director. At the first meeting in September two thousand and twenty, a lot of things happened. First, the municipal clerk distanced herself from this entity. Question of who your secretary was, did not understand what the law was as the Open Public Meetings Act and how applied to this entity. Chair made an explicit statement, who's not here tonight, that even though he's an attorney, would give no legal advice as anything. I recommended you get DNO insurance. And I said that we should have two opportunities to address the board, on genuine action items and at the end of the meeting after your speech. In the last forty-five days, judges have issued clear and loud messages to this town. Mediate and not litigate this issue about the validity that I asserted colorable claims and other matters and about fair share housing. It's outrageous what's out here. Last Tuesday, last Wednesday at the council meeting, there was questions about adopting your bylaws. The bylaws were not attached to the resolution. It's time that the public not go on its night pawns. There's questions about the fair share housing that the judge admitted, Judge Garner, that he never told the town, that he never told the final term prior to consideration of official action. Tony South, this gentleman will be speaking about that later tonight, but Judge Moore ruled, and also people have been asking that, we were asking for an independent investigation as to what happened. At that time, our former mayor must have.
If you could wrap up, please.
I will in a few seconds. Will be asked questions about oath and, under oath and perjury, penalty of perjury, about what happened as to a certain meeting that occurred on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty.
Mr. Phil, thank you. Your time's up.
My time is not up. I will be seeing you, and we will continue.
Thank you.
And in court.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Anyone else in the room would like to speak?
Thank you, pal. Three fifty-eight C Milburn Avenue. Couple, just two things, little things. I saw on the agenda, there's a possibility that we're removing the speakers and we might put new ones up. I think that's great. I do have a question. I hope we use them if we do that, like music we used to do at the holiday time, maybe pipe in the music when we do the music in the summertime. That would be a great thing. I also thought about another kind of event, because we're doing Girls Night Out. I think that's a great idea. How about like Meet Me in Milburn Short Hills, one night a month, we do music and an activity, kind of like a, you know, to get more people into town, not just for the music, but to the other business, have one night dedicated openly. That's just another thought. And lastly, I have to tell you, Steve, I'm very impressed by you because I've been. um because I've been watching people have various questions about business activities in town, et cetera. And you're always on top of the game and you're answering questions. And I noticed on the day of the snowstorm, when we were all closed, but you made sure to, to um put out there that the parking lot was open to go park at the deck. So you can go and uh go to the restaurants, which I thought was very impressive. You didn't have to do it. You did it. You were, you're always on the top of the game and I just want to commend you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Nancy Stone, two sixty-six Texas Street, Nancy David Finejels. First, I want to endorse and back up Aaron and his cause for, I think that's fantastic. If you're able to get five liquor licenses into town to help a business like his succeed and compete with some of the other businesses that have the advantage of having the liquor license. I think that has always been something that has not been um in favor of some of the smaller businesses like the La Pergola, Basilico, uh, any other business for that matter of downtown Melbourne. With that said, when I was the treasurer of the Sid, we had a qualified attorney and no attorney would ever say, don't answer a question that we as taxpayers are rightfully entitled to the answer to. I find your response to be arrogant, disrespectful to someone who is paying your salary or your fee, I should say. Greenbaum Row would never answer in that capacity. And it is a disgrace that you even have the nerve to think that you can defend these people when they, what they're doing is in good faith and you should be advising them in good faith. It is disgusting that you would say that we're not entitled to answers. Yes, we are entitled to answers and thank you, Jeff Feld. We will get those answers. I am not a lawyer, but I came here for the purpose of defending the business community of the town. With that said, I'm going to call you and you liars because you promised that the budget was going to be two hundred and four thousand. And in two thousand twenty-two, you said that fifty percent of the salary was going to be paid for by the town, keeping the cap at two hundred and four thousand. You are on record for saying that. We are locating the footage where you and Richard both said that. Are you listening, Richard? Okay, good, because you are both on record when you were doing your vetting, that fifty percent and you were going to cap it at the two oh four. You're now at two fifty-three plus, plus the carryover from the previous. If you're going to spend the money, do it correctly and what you said you were going to do. You have properties in town that are not being assessed, that have paying commercial real estate rent to the town. And they're collecting commercial rent and they're not paying into the Sid. They're not on this list. Because I did a full analysis on the entire Sid amount. So you're a liar and you're a liar. For the record.
Anyone else in, uh, in the room?
Hi guys, that is Nicole, the book house, two hundred eighty-one Essex Street. It's fun to be on the other side. Um, I just wanted to say very quickly, I'm very excited about spring and summer coming and what events you guys are going to put together. Um, I'm really looking forward to this. I also wanted to um talk about the liquor license. I, I'm the book house sort of further away from Common Lot. Um, not only would it help the restaurant businesses, but I think that part of Essex Street looks a little bit like it's an abandoned area. And I think if that would get revitalized with investment from a restaurant and the liquor license, I think it would be great for my business, Kamanas business. There are a lot of businesses there, but we kind of look a little bit lost. So um, I think that would be great to support such an initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we, uh, anybody else in the room? It's been everybody. How about on, on Zoom? Looks like we have some hands, hand, hands raised.
Hi, how are you? Sorry.
Sir, so.
Yeah. Um, so, good evening. At the January twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two meeting, all, um, all of the meeting was actually virtual. I forfeited my comments and questions because I agree and concur with Mr. Feld. It is concerning that there were no acknowledgements of Mr. Feld's prior submittal to this board. And why were his comments not read into the record per the email dated January thirteenth, two thousand twenty at ten fifty AM from Mr. Grillo, assuring Mr. Feld that his comments would be read into the record in accordance with the DCA regulations. I was compelled to read the remainder of his questions after Mrs. Pasternak was out of time. I asked Mr. Parlo Becki of the Sid Chair, Essex County Board Commissioner Attorney and Municipal Attorney of Bloomfield, Mr. Grillo, ex-executive director of Staten Island Sid, and the former council mayor of Sayerville. And as attorneys and officers of the court, Mr. Weiner, Mr. Cooper, why did this happen? Do you feel that this act is in a violation of the LFB Local Finance Board notice of proper procedures of the meetings? Again, because what transpired in the January thirteenth, two thousand twenty meeting, the Board of Trustees, I did not have the opportunity to share my concerns. I had been asking multiple times since two thousand twenty to present, how much will disenfranchised property owners be assessed in two thousand twenty-two? In the email exchanges with Mr. Grillo in December, two thousand twenty-one, Mr. Grillo tried to insult my intelligence by questioning, what is a different disenfranchised property owner? Further stated, this is not a legal or practical term related to the Sid. No one can provide an answer without my explanation. Well, Mr. Grillo, disenfranchised means to deprive someone the right to vote. Not being able to vote on the basis of a residence qualification. This Sid is an appointed board. This entity is controlled by the township committee. Because of the bare property litigation, Mr. Grillo is frequently trying to solicit downtown and upper Melbourne Avenue buy-in with little to no attention to the other districts because he knows that the bid, the Sid are meant for downtowns and pedestrian mall-like settings. Ask, I ask you why, Mr. Grillo, does he choose to drive his car to the other districts and not walk? Many ask for information that should be easily accessible to public, to the public. We cannot receive information only even by way of Oprah. It's twenty twenty-two. Where are the following? Twenty twenty approved budget, twenty twenty audit. When will the twenty twenty-one audit be available? Employment contract for, and agreement for Marla Ertskin, and why is her name removed? Website. Employment contracts for Steve Grillo, which was retained on May tw- of two thousand twenty-one without prior public comment. How much, to Mrs. Lieberberg?
Mr. So your time's up. If you could please wrap it up.
Yeah, thank you. To Mrs. Lieberberg, what is the tax rate property owners are being assessed at this year? Is it point zero 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 six seven?
Sir, so your time's up. Thank you very much.
Did you lie?
Then who's the next speaker?
It's Pastor Nuck, you're on.
Hey there. Good evening. Um, welcome to the new businesses and I'm looking forward to the marchfourth.org um event. It's wonderful to educate all of us about colon cancer and thank you for doing that. Um, I'd like to first um address Mr. Cooperman and his uh statement this evening. I sent him an email this afternoon asking, well, I mean clarifying a previous one, asking simply for the square footage space of the Explore Melbourne office in Town Hall. And the reason for asking that is I was accused of over inflating the investment that the community has made, residents, that is, taxpayers, in Explore. And I'd like to have all the costs, um, including the, that, the, the quote unquote free office space to calculate into that number to be able to better clarify my comment. So I think what I asked for is, is a pertinent question and I really resent his response. And I, I hope that this board will stand up to that and say, absolutely not. Our community is investing in our organization. Please answer their questions. Um, the second thing I want to talk about is Oprah. I mean, Oprah requests have been made and have gone unanswered, such as contracts for um Ms. Itkin and Mr. Grillo, I believe. They haven't been forthcoming. So if, if you want us to use Oprah, then would you please respond according to the guidelines? Uh, the second thing I want to talk about is public comment. Why, may I ask, could you consider using the JF model, meaning that the public should have two opportunities to speak, first on the agenda uh that we're currently doing and then be able to respond to the things discussed at the meeting, even quoting or responding directly to a member of the public at the end of the meeting? I think that's what most um me, public entities are doing and I think it would be great if you would do that. Uh, I'd like to also comment about um the bylaws. I think, I, I was at the township committee meeting. I would have really liked to have had a copy of the bylaws to follow the conversation. I think it's a courtesy to show to the public that, that you're a professional group and that you want to share what you're doing. The other thing that I find pretty astounding is that there's nothing on your agenda at all, the fair share housing settlement, which was the subject of a hearing just a week or two ago, uh, maybe three now. Um, I mean, this is a huge thing that's going to affect the community and it's going to affect every person and business in this town. I think it should be on um some, some portion of your agenda. As far as the Bakon South situation, I know that there's a, an item on the agenda to talk about it. But what I'd like to request is an independent legislative oversight investigation to how this restaurant could operate for two years without permits and adherence to our local zoning laws. You took an oath um and you are supposed to uphold it. Um, Ms. Lieberberg was observed when she was mayor, talking to the proprietor and landlord back in September of two thousand twenty. We owe, um, she owes, sorry, the public an explanation as a member of this board, well, as an adjunct, whatever she is of this board. Um, it's unconscionable. It, we really need to understand how this happened.
Pastor Nuck, your time's up. If you could please just wrap it up.
Okay, I'd like to um just add one more thing. Uh, I, I hope that you'll consider having a resident on the advisory committee, given that residents are contributing uh to the budget. And I hope that um you'll also note any businesses that have left the township, such as Calico Corners, which is heading to uh Summit, uh, the cinema, the old.
Pastor Nuck, thank you. Your, your time is up. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? One more, okay. Mr. Futter, you're on.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Richard Futter, three, 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 Melbourne Avenue. Um, I have just very few things. I'd like to have a better understanding of the uh two thousand twenty-two Sid assessment role. Um, there's four columns. One is the two thousand twenty-two assessment. The second is the Sid percent chargeable. Then it's two thousand twenty-two net Sid assessment and then the Sid tax. I don't understand the difference. I don't understand the last two columns. The net Sid assessment and the uh Sid tax at point zero 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 seven one. Uh, that's the first thing I wanted to say. Uh, get a better clear picture on just how it's done because I couldn't figure it out. Um, the assessment, uh, the, the budget, the operating budget for uh two thousand twenty-two. Um, I see the assessment is two thousand, uh, two hundred and four thousand. Um, I see general operating on expended funds, explore refresh on expended funds. Now, in the past, I think the state Sid ordinance and the municipal ordinance uh said that if there were unexpended funds, that reduced the budget um or the amount of the assessment. Um, so I, I, I don't know how that works, but the question I'm leading to is there may be a uh, at the end of this year, another budget presented for two thousand twenty-three. What would be presented as the budget, two seventy-three, three, uh, three seventy-five or two thousand, uh, two hundred and four thousand? That's a question. Okay. Um, and last but not least, I don't think that, from what I heard, a township committee, uh, there was a suggestion and may have been voted on to use the uh nonprofit ordinance um to structure the voting requirements uh on certain occasions with the Sid. I think if you're trying to reach out for more participat- uh, participation, you don't want to be restrictive. And if you're using the uh nonprofit ordinance to do that.
Miss, Mr. Futter, your time's up. You could please wrap it up.
I will wrap it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Sorry. Okay. No, no, I apologize. I, you, you have more time.
Yeah, start off. I only have, I only have one last thing. Article five, the advisory board. Um, I have a problem with the wording that says whenever possible there would be representative for each of the five districts. Anybody who has chaired an organization that is responsible for gaining volunteer participation knows that it's difficult. But I think you really need to, um, and I know you've tried hard, but I think you really need to try harder and uh make it a requirement that each of the districts are represented. Did you want me to go back to um the last topic or?
Now, Mr. Futter, I think now your time's up.
You better believe it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any, any other public comments? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Um, you can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our Township Committee Report from uh Mr. Wasserman.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so.
I think your microphone's off. It has turned green now.
Oh, got it. Yeah, it's nice to have new mics. Anyway, um, so I just, so I just want to fill uh our board in on, on some of the, some of, some of what's going on in the, in the township as far as where, where, where I'm sitting. Um, so the municipal parking deck signage project, which we've, which we've, we've, I brought up once before, I think at committee. Um, this is a really big deal. I mean, we have a, a very large parking deck, which is, uh, which is underused. Um, you know, especially through COVID. Um, we, we do have, we still have parking issues in town. And a, and a big part of the problem is signage. So, and this has been going on, this is going on for years. You know, we're talking about putting up signage. So when visitors come into town, they know where they can park, public parking, you know, every town has it. Uh, for whatever reason, we don't have it. And, um, and this is going on for quite a long time. And I'm, I'm really pleased that uh signage is coming. Um, I'm hoping in the, I, I, we checked, uh, I think we touched base with their consultant. And we're hoping in the next couple of months that we're going to have signage uh on the parking deck as well as uh street signage. So when visitors come into town, visitors want to shop at our stores, come to our restaurants, that they know where they can park. And the, and the parking is available. There, there's plenty of parking. And uh, and I think that that's really, uh, that's really a big deal because it's something that uh we facilitated. And it's something that's nice to get it done for the merchants and for, for residents also. So, so that's one thing. Um, so the liquor license, um, you know, so, so part of the discussion tonight is, is the liquor license. Um, you know, some of the conversation that, that I've been having uh with Mr. Grillo, you know, is, is more of a, of, of thinking in terms of what the town doesn't have. Um, you know, how it might be nice to have a, a micro brewery like other towns or, or, um, you know, or a wine, you know, a wine bar. You know, uh, a lot of upscale towns have these, uh, have these. We don't have it. Uh, you know, we, again, this is, this is something that, that I think a lot of the residents have, have been thinking about. And so part of the liquor license, uh, it's part of the liquor license thinking is also, how could we have uh, you know, maybe extra licenses to target those businesses, not only, you know, throw it up in the air in terms of, you know, having licenses, but, but maybe if we had an extra capacity for these licenses that we can target a micro brewery or a wine bar and bring them to town. And, and that could be something that we could facilitate and it would really play into our greater theme of, of staying local, shopping local, uh, uh, dining local. And this would be, be part of, uh, you know, part of our, our larger thinking. Uh, and other than that, other than that, flood mitigation is, uh, is central to some of my work. Um, we have a, a very committed uh committee of nine residents that are, that are working every week. There are subcommittees. And uh, we are really, uh, we're really committed to providing flood mitigation for township. There's always another storm coming. We have to do everything we can to uh provide, uh, you know, provide mitigation for the next item, you know, so so that we're prepared for it. And we do everything we can. And uh, and I do do want to thank, uh, if anybody from flood mitigation is listening uh to all those uh, those nine people and uh professionals that are working on this every week. So that's my report.
Thank you. Are you working with like the Army Corps of Engineers on the?
No, no, I want to be specific. It's actually a very good point. Uh, there's a, there's, there is a a broader level in terms of flood mitigation, in terms of Army Engi- uh, Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, our mayor is working uh with Broadway Mayor's Council uh on 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 the larger issues. Our flood mitigation committee is specifically working in terms of our own infrastructure. And the thinking is, what can we do in town uh with with our funds? What can we do to make a difference in town? And it has less to do with with the global causes of uh of of flood mitigation. But really, what can we do in town to to prepare ourselves for the storm in terms of our infrastructure, bridge, bridges? Uh, uh, you know, uh, you know, buildings, uh, waterways, that type of thing, and that's what we've been working on.
Any other questions? Can't see if Andrew's joined us or not. Not yet. Um, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Uh, the Business Administrators' Report.
Yes, uh, two brief reports. So the Taylor Park Gateway Subcommittee met this morning. Mr. Rose sits on the Subcommittee as well. And we are now in the process of kicking off the um implementation and design phase with MKW Associates and contractors, looking into different possibilities for that site off of Milburn Avenue. Um, and they're beginning their site analysis and site survey. And in the coming weeks, we'll have a date for a public info session for people to offer their ideas and thoughts on the site. That will be communicated um through CID channels. And just a brief update on the uh Baccony South um closing. So they were denied variance at the zoning board of adjustment. Um, and they appealed their decision and lost. And so based on um the rejection of their appeal, um, they must cease operations on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Um, and at that point, their doors will be closed to the public. Um, and they will not be able to operate as a restaurant in that location. And those are my reports.
Thank you. I'm just curious, I mean, is there any chance that the Taylor Park, the Gateway Project could be completed like this year? Or is this going to be a next year thing, probably? I'm just curious. It's a great project.
Yeah, so it's a six-month process to um kind of populate their design uh concepts. And then and then the governing body would have to make a decision as to whether they want to follow one of them or not. The construction phase, so depending on when the designs would be submitted and potentially approved, that could reach into the fall. And at that point, it would probably make more sense to kick off construction if that's agreed upon by the committee for the following spring. So figure at some point in twenty twenty-three, if the design, if the design that has consensus and then um has approval from the governing body, that's when you can see something.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have a question about the Gateway Project. So um, with all the designs, I mean, I've seen some of them there, you know, the hot um topic is that Rose Garden. Uh, do all the designs have the um, the Rose Garden being moved? Or are there some design?
No discussion of that with the contractor. So what they're going to do is, and there's representation from the Short Hill Garden Club on the Subcommittee to make sure that their voices are in the process. But they're also going to hear from the public at the first info session before they even put together a design.
Okay.
And then later on, once they put together their concepts. And so they know the sensitivity of the Rose Garden in that space. And I think they're definitely going to keep that in mind as they put together their project.
Chairman, just a a quick point of clarification. So um, on social media over the last three or four days, uh, there's been chatter that myself, as a member of the Gateway Committee and by extension the CID, uh, has proposed the, and I quote, uh, removal of the Rose Garden in favor of a performance space. That was never said by me, never said by anybody on the committee in any of the meetings that we had. I think it is exceptionally important in this world of Facebook flotsam and jetsam uh that that was never said by me or any representative of the CID. If anything, a performance space would only be there to support and enhance the Rose Garden. Um, and so as Jesse mentioned, we are a long, long way from design. Um, but from the CID's perspective, the Rose Garden only helps the work that we do. And I just want to make that very, very clear tonight on the record, especially for those who don't necessarily believe what I've said about forty times.
And can I make just a comment on this? I've been in touch, I I'm I'm constantly in touch with the with the Rose Garden, uh, with the Rose Garden Committee and their volunteers. I'm also committed to the Rose Garden and uh, and you know, and and in terms of of the work that's being done. And I I'm only speaking for myself here, because uh, you know, if there is a governing body and I'm only one, one vote. But I will say that that uh, as Mr. Grillo mentioned, you know, there's chatter, you know, that there's, there's a plot to to remove it. I am totally committed to a Rose Garden. Um, I think it's it's, I think uh, it's amazing. I think that if anything, we're going to enhance the Rose Garden. We're going to make that 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 site more open to our residents. And I think it, I think there's an opportunity to uh, to really have more people enjoy uh the park, the Rose Garden, uh, and uh, and and make it available. And and again, it also plays into uh um having something amazing for residents so they stay local and shop local and and enjoy local. And that all goes into a lot of things that we keep talking about. But but I just want, want people to know, and there will be public participation, because they will have, uh, we'll definitely make sure that there is opportunity for for everybody to uh, to have a voice in this. But I just want to make that comment.
Just one, well, just to add to that, though, Richard, I just think it's important to consider just not only um enhancing the Rose Garden, of course, I think we all want to keep it. And I think it's also important that we keep it in the location where it's at, because if we move it, it's, you know, it's not going to be the same. It's hard to transfer those plantings, from what I understand as well. I'm also in touch with um many members of the Short Hills, um, the Garden Club. So just putting that out there to the Township Committee, just to, you know, keep that in mind, that it is not, it's, you know, I would, I would prefer, you know, designs for the new Gateway Project Incorporated, keeping the Rose Garden in its current location.
I just want you to know that the Rose Garden is on this committee.
No, I know, I I know that, but I'm just saying, I, there's all this chatter online of people saying that we're going to move it and all. So I just think it should be clear that that is, you know, I think it should be considered.
Thank you. I can wear a different hat. This will be my Treasures Report. Discount money, that's right. I can monopolize that, that. All right, so as posted and included in the in the packet that was uh posted online, as of February third, twenty twenty-two, our account balance in the bank was six thousand two hundred and seven dollars. And um, it may seem low, but I think it's pending Township Committee approval tomorrow.
Next week.
Next week, sorry. Soon as, as soon as they go through and if pending its approval, we will be um immediately uh depositing a check uh that will cover the um allocation for the Executive Director's salary, I believe.
Yeah, just to clarify for the record, if the budget is passed next week um at a meeting that I encourage all of you to attend as well, I'll certainly be there in person. Um, if the budget is approved, uh, then the township is obligated to provide us with their portion of of the Executive Director's salary. Um, what you see there is a line item of fifty-three thousand three seventy-five. Um, and so we don't have the authority to accept that money, because the budget has not been approved. However, once it is, we will then have the authority, um, and we'll then have an operating budget of fifteen. I'm sorry, I'm speaking, I, someone was ill, I guess they were coughing terrible in COVID times. Um, once we're able to accept that, we'll have about a budget of about sixty thousand dollars.
Very good, thank you. Just the other interesting point here is that you'll see the line item, email service and tech support. So uh, I'm happy to report, uh, our Milburn Tech Team and Steve and Marla, I think our parting gift to us, was able to um work magic. And as as a nonprofit organization, we reduced the cost of our email service from eighteen dollars a month per user to little, five dollars and four cents per month per user. So for the year, that's going to amount to a savings for us of about thirteen hundred and seventy dollars. So it's great, we're leveraging the fact that we're nonprofit, and uh, this is the Google Vault Service that we use. So so that was, that was good news. Um, at the very bottom, then again, just to remind everybody, the amount of our approved budget uh was two seventy-three, three seventy-five. So far, we've only spent seventeen thousand seventy-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. So that is it for the Treasures Report. Any questions from the board?
I just think it's important.
I just think it's important that the the assessment is two hundred and four thousand dollars. And the town is picking up half of the director, executive director's salary, which is fifty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-five. So I just, the assessment to our merchants is two hundred and four thousand dollars.
And that hasn't changed.
And that has not changed.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the Marketing and Events Report. Looks like Tracy, you? Something?
Yep, I'll, I'll start off. Um, so some good news. I've been working closely with Steve over the past couple of weeks. Um, he completed a very detailed census and vacancy study, and a part of that helped enhance our database. Um, that's on the website, um, in terms of having much more detail on all of the businesses in the CID. So through that effort, we just um completed adding about two hundred businesses um to our list that's going to be up on our website shortly. That especially included the addition of a lot of, I guess, a lot, the addition of a lot of professional services, um, especially um medical type of services. Um, and we also added some additional categories and some additional detail to just make this, I mean, this is the heart of what we do, is connecting people with all of the wonderful businesses in our town. Um, and in fact, at the same time, we got some data. We have, you know, had some really, you know, great traffic to the site, thousands of website visitors. And the directory is definitely the highest traffic page. So we will let everybody know, once this is fully updated, it should be within the next week or so, I'm hopeful. And that'll just enable us to even just drive more people to the website and make it even more user-friendly. Um, and I will say, I myself was amazed by learning about some of the businesses that are in town, that I didn't even know were here. And as I said, especially on the professional services side, I think we really have an opportunity to encourage everybody to shop local, not just, I mean, obviously our ground floor restaurants um and stores, but also a lot of the services. Um, Stephen, I I know you stepped out for a sec, but am I missing anything big on our?
Knowing you, absolutely not. No chance.
So I think our, the grand total is, anyone want to guess? Four sixty, four sixty?
Uh, it's it's about that, yeah. We uh, we've been culling through and culling through and culling through. So um, we did compare everything with our our vacancy report and that, and we'll have a final number. But uh, I think at this point, we're showing about five twenty-two um for the vacancy report. And then we've been looking for duplicates and errors and things. So um, but either way, it is a, it's a big time number, so the number of businesses we have.
Okay, any questions from anybody? Okay.
Founder's Day event.
Let me take my mask off if that's. Good evening, everyone. I am happy to uh let everyone know that on Saturday, April thirtieth, the Cultural Engagement Committee, in conjunction with several others, Town Beautification League, the Environmental Commission, the Green Team, the uh Creative Collective, and Explore Milburn Short Hills, will be hosting a whole day of activities, beginning around eleven AM. We will have a town-wide beautification, which will also include an activity for children to participate. Uh, both the Green Team and the Milburn Creative Collective to involve some planting of milkweed seeds, which are uh in biodegradable pots that uh we, that we are encouraging people to plant, not only around the, around the uh, the five districts, but also in their homes. Milkweed is an important food for butterflies. We'll be doing some cleanup. Uh, and around one PM, the plan is to migrate over to the Bauer Center, where we'll have the Historical Society engaged in a variety of um old and new uh projects, some paper dolls, some uh, some hats. Milburn's founding was in eighteen fifty-seven, so we will be celebrating, help me do the math, uh, two thousand twenty-two, so it's uh, one, one sixty-five, one sixty-five. So um, so the out, and then in in addition, at Bauer, we'll have some food. We'll have a lecture about the history of Milburn Township. We'll have other craft participation. Uh, on December fifth, as a nod to uh Hurricane Ida, um, the Cultural Engagement Committee uh engaged in a um project where students participated and and created uh original artwork, resilience, gratitude, and strength. And we're hoping, fingers crossed, that we'll be able to display some of this in the alleyway between uh, what what is Springbone and uh, and uh, Goldberg, thank you, I was having a moment. So that that's uh also on tap for that day. So we'll be have, it it will be a fun-filled day, eleven to three. Maybe uh, we're looking for volunteers to help with setup and cleanup. So uh, any of those people listening, we encourage you. And our rain date for this event will be Sunday, May first. So um we're very excited. And if anybody has any questions, see the info at milburntwp.org or my email, Jackie@ExploreMilburnShortHills. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I welcome all your participation. Thank you. So just so I mean, the original date for this, uh, Jesse and Richard know, that was uh, was supposed to be March fifteenth of twenty twenty. So it was, broke my heart when we had to cancel it on March thirteenth of twenty twenty, when the world, as we knew it, changed dramatically. So here we are, yeah, here we are, twenty twenty-two. And we're relaunching a bigger and better program. So I hope you'll all participate. Thank you.
I mean, it it sounds like it could become an annual event.
Well, that that is certainly for something we are hoping that this, yeah, acts as a springboard for this community engagement, volunteers, the cleanup, the beautification. It's um, also, I, it, please note that April is Native Plant Appreciation Month, so we'll be tying that in as well. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a big tent, and it's a big umbrella for for all to participate. And there will be something for everybody, so please mark your calendars. It's after the school break, we were careful, we have no conflicts with holidays. So um come, enjoy.
Great, thank you. Any any other questions?
Did I miss anything, Steve?
No, I'd just say from the CID perspective, um, we will be coordinating the litter pickup in all five of the business districts. All five of the business districts. And we will also be, uh, hopefully, if we have enough in the budget, we'll be doing um tree pit improvements in all five of the districts. The town only maintains the ones in the complete streets area. So um, there's dozens of others throughout the district. Uh, if we have enough money, we're going to try to do that as well as part of that process.
That's great, thank you. That brings us to the Executive Director Report, so Mr. Grillo.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, first report is just on the budget hearing reminder, as I mentioned earlier, February fifteenth, uh, which is next Tuesday at seven PM here in the council chambers, committee chambers, I should say. Um, there will be a hearing on the budget. Um, it is part of the resolution packet that uh everyone else can comment on. So certainly those that are in support um or in opposition, it's a free country, you can come and speak um either way, if you'd like, on the budget. Um, so hopefully, it will be passed by the Township Committee, and then we'll be able to proceed with operations for twenty twenty-two. The the next item is, I actually worked with the Executive Director in Cranford on creating um a CID Directors Working Group. And so about ten days ago or so, uh, myself and thirteen other CID Directors in the Union and Essex County area met virtually. We had a conversation about some of the challenges that we all share. in the Union and Essex County area met virtually, we had a conversation about some of the challenges that we all share in terms of economic development, some of the trends that we see in in all of our communities. Big takeaway really for me was seeing what some other communities are doing in terms of print media, as well as there's some really good programs out there that various print media outlets offer that we can take advantage of, especially in the holiday season. And additionally, some really cool ideas for the small business season, holiday season period, that, you know, some great ideas that I think we can embellish on. So it was great to hear what other communities are doing. We're going to continue to meet on a fairly regular basis. And I think it only helps elevate us as as a Sid. You know, obviously, we're very young, we're only a year or so old, but you know, we're getting our name out there, not only within our own community, but within the region. So that was very productive. In terms of upcoming events and meetings, there's attachment number five in your packets. It's been a busy a couple of weeks, which is, you know, nice, especially in the middle of January. We had the Garden State Hemp reopening event, which many folks attended. We hosted a round Realtor Roundtable, a Property Owners Summit for some of the large property owners in town. We hope to repeat that and expand that group. We hosted a merchant mixer at Tonino Cigars last week, which was an absolute hit. We had over thirty people attending that at a new business. And certainly, we're looking forward to doing something in April, hopefully, for our next mixer. Uh, we did some, we we have some other events coming up. We are supporting, I don't want to get around, I believe it's the the Melbourne Chinese Association. Young woman had come come and spoke at our December meeting about that event that was originally scheduled for January. But I think the better sense of town management talked them out of it and said, you know, outdoor festival, January, probably not a great idea. Why don't we push it back to March? So that's going to be another opportunity for merchants to participate. And so we'll be rolling out some of that participation information. Going to be doing an event on Melbourne Avenue between Main and Whittingham, so sort of where Jim Jim Marco is. That'll be planned for sometime in March. We want to encourage kind of a a night out. We're calling it sip, shop and savor. So details to follow on that. We're going to be doing the Founder's Day event, as as Jack you mentioned, and then we're going to have a Mother's Day Girls Night Out and a Father's Day event as well. And both Mother's Day and Father's Day events will be in multiple locations throughout the district, not just in downtown. So we we have some details to work out on that, but we're excited, at least for the first five months. I think we've got a pretty good events calendar plan.
Chair, can I can I just, Steve, when I was giving my report, I I was a little remiss in discussing the liquor license planning study. Do you want to, do you want, do you want to just circle back to that now while you're still, while you're doing your reports?
Sure. So something that Richard and I had discussed, and I've spoken to a couple of other committee members on this, board members on this, is the opportunity to avoid some of the confusion that businesses often encounter when they come to a new community. So let's let's go under the premise that we do get additional liquor licenses. We'll pick an arbitrary number, we'll pick that five, right, that that is currently domiciled at the mall. Let's say the state grants us five additional. Obviously, no promises, just picking a round number. We'd want to try to encourage brewery, a wine bar, a mixology bar, for instance. Maybe give a liquor or sell a liquor license to an existing restaurant in town that's wanted one, right? So there's a whole host of opportunities that that we can have. The question is, how do we make that path the clearest, right? Because we do have zoning regulations in this town, which limit where restaurants can be. We learned that from the Bucone South issue, right? Obviously, there won't be a restaurant there anymore because of of the zoning issues. And so what we need to do is make sure that we're providing a very, very clear blueprint to future businesses as to where they can operate, what the restrictions may be. Certainly prioritizing vacant storefronts, we have twenty three of them. You know, if we can try to find an ideal space where we could locate one of these brewery or wine wine bar, whatever it may be. I think that's a great step forward. When you look at Summit, Westfield, Cranford, right, some of our upper scale competitors, they all have breweries. Each of them. We don't. And so I think what I what I would like to do, and and just sort of informal consent here from the board is I'd like to be authorized to speak to our municipal planner and understand what he could do from a zoning perspective and how we could review. What does our zoning map look like? Where could we have these potential institutions? What obstacles may they face? And so that if we do get these licenses, and I certainly want to also engage not only the the planner, potentially an ABC attorney, so that we understand all the different liquor rules. I know that there's some, there's some differences and Ryan can speak to that better than I can about the different types of licenses. But also speak to the folks that already have liquor licenses in this town and speak to the folks that want liquor licenses. Obviously, you've heard from some of them tonight. I really want to do a a robust engagement on how this can be done in our community. So I'd like to proceed with that. I'd like to speak to our our planner, see what can be done in terms of of a of an actual report. We do have a budget line item, like we did last year for the parking study. We can do the same thing this year. We haven't come up with an idea yet. I think this is a really pressing one. I think liquor license reform in this state, I just read the the article in your packets talks about we are the forty ninth worst state, other than Utah, for liquor liquor licenses. And so there's a real step forward that needs to be taken. And I think we can be vanguards in this as the Sid. I think this is the perfect role for us. So not asking for any type of financial commitment today. I'd like to speak to our planner, see what he can put together, and then bring it back to you guys for review.
I'm fully supportive of that. I think that's a great idea. I don't know. But I I I mean, would would then then you'd figure out how to actually conduct a more strategic study, right? This is just preliminary talking with with more people. Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, I think I'd like to come up with a, you know, generic scope of work, see what players need to be involved, see how how expensive it would be to do that work, obviously, kind of build a budget around it. But I think we as the Sid need to take the role of trying to lead on the liquor license, not argument. I think that's that's going to be settled in Trenton. But I think if it is settled in Trenton, we need to be prepared for it.
Yeah, yeah.
And then only comment, oh, sorry, it was.
Okay, um, just adding a thought. I would love for us to research, my understanding is that there's different rules related to things like breweries. And there's other things that are possible even without a full liquor license. So I would love to make this, if we're going to do the research to understand that as well. And I guess just a somewhat auxiliary comment, but I would really, you know, now that we're becoming somewhat more established, you said, we're still, we're still kind of a very new Sid compared to others. But I would really like to see us playing a bigger role in researching, attracting businesses to town. And certainly, the breweries, as you said, seem like an obvious one. But I say, I guess this is a more general comment, too, is just to keep this in mind, is how can we play a role? And, you know, perhaps do we even form a subcommittee at some point about researching? What are the innovative types of businesses out there, not just in New Jersey, but all over? I mean, we could get great ideas from other regions of the country as well. So sorry to add a little tangential thought.
No, it's that's actually a really good point. I don't want to interrupt you, Richard. But that was a really good point that came out of our Realtor Roundtable discussion. And I'll talk a little bit about that during the vacancy study, but that exact same thing came up.
Okay, good.
And I was just going to add that we, you know, we have members of the Standard and Moonshine and, you know, others that have invested in liquor licenses. I just want to make sure that they're part of the conversation and respectful to to our members or, you know, or other, you know, other other places that have spent, you know, a lot of money on their liquor licenses, so we don't negatively impact them and that we're in the process.
Well, thank you for that. I will engage with the planner and I'll I'll let you know next meeting. I'm going to just make my report on the state of the city. I'm going to do it from the podium, just so I can see the screen. Okay, so tonight's presentation will update the results of the July twenty twenty one report, which I made to this body, and we're going to highlight the positive trajectory, I'm glad to report, of the commercial vacancy rate. Review some of the important data, assess on the ground conditions and understand how various policies impact or are impacted by these numbers. So to Tracy's point. So as you all know, the city is comprised of five non-contiguous areas. Each of them has their own character, needs and often land use and zoning. So keep in mind that we're aspiring to reach a commercial vacancy rate of about five percent. That would signify a very healthy commercial district. Of course, take into account that we have five separate commercial districts. So it's a little bit skewed, right? Because we're not talking about just one downtown district. So in terms of the total number of tax lots, and Mr. Futter had asked a question like this, and this probably isn't for me to get into the details, but Mr. Futter, I think you're still on the call. If you'd like to reach out to me, we can have a conversation about how the lots are assessed. I think he has some good technical questions that I'm happy to answer, so you can reach out to me personally to do so. So in terms of a total number of lots, there's two hundred and six total lots within the district. So total lots, right, that's every tax lot. And there's forty seven of them that are exempt or non-assessed. And those are typically ones that are owned by the township for the most part. So they're not taxed because they're not used. There's also some lots that are a hundred percent residential. We don't collect any Sid assessment on residential properties. So of course, there's also multiple addresses on tax lots. So you see two hundred and six lots, right? But there's over five hundred businesses and there's certainly more addresses, there's more addresses than two of six. And so sixty two percent of the tax lots are actually located in the downtown district, as you see there. And only twelve percent of the tax lots are in the Wyoming Business Center in Morris Turnpike at Short Hills, mainly because those are very, very large tax lots. They're strip malls or or office buildings. So again, instead of getting back to the difference in in our districts, you've got two hundred and six tax lots, sixty two of them are downtown because many of them are very, very small. If you go to the next slide, the percentage of the overall assessment by tax lot, so now this is not the number of tax lots, this is how much money is collected from each district that goes into the two hundred and, you'll see there, it says two oh six, two eighty seven. That's essentially a rounding error created by the Tax Assessor's Office. They can't get it to an exact two oh four because of the way that the that the assessment is collected. But if anyone has specific questions on how they actually calculate that, you can ask the tax assessor, but we will not receive an overage of that extra two thousand. We will only receive the two oh four. And so when you look at at the percentage of these lots, you've got downtown representing forty three percent of the total assessment, Morris Turnpike at Short Hills, the second highest, twenty six percent. And so again, you know, it gets back to, we talk, we do talk about, you know, the the, how do we spread the wealth? We try to be, I think, very objective and very fair and then go above and beyond to make sure that everybody's getting representation. But let's also keep in mind that there's a, there's a financial impact here, and the downtown does provide forty three percent of the overall budget. Go to the next slide. So businesses by building typology. So I broke the building typologies into three categories. This is actually something Tracy brought up six months ago. Storefronts is the first, then second floor office or retail, and then multi-tenant office. So as you can see from the chart, Wyoming's businesses are mainly located in multi-tenant offices. Downtown is mainly storefronts. Upper Melbourne Avenue is exclusively storefronts. And Morris Turnpike is fairly evenly split between the the storefronts and the 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 offices. And so now, again, keep in mind that this shows the number of businesses assigned to each typology, not the total number of buildings in each one. So for instance, there's not a hundred and ninety six multi-tenant offices. There's a hundred and ninety six businesses within multi-tenant offices. So this, this, I really just wanted to show how different and how varied our building typology is across the city. This is not just a classic downtown storefront city. This has got a little bit of everything. Next slide, please. So then the total number of businesses. There's approximately five hundred and twenty two businesses within the special improvement district. This is, as always, is a moving target, right? We have businesses opening, closing, hopefully not closing, hopefully opening. We do see more opening than closing. And and we also improve our records all the time, right? As we go, we do on the ground surveying, we find that some records are outdated, things are missing, things are incomplete. It's just the nature of the beast when you have over five hundred businesses to keep track of. But having five hundred is a really quite significant number. For example, Cranford only has between two hundred and two hundred and fifty businesses. We've got double that. So the majority, fifty two percent, are located in downtown, as you see here, with eighteen percent each in Wyoming and Morris Turnpike. Twelve percent are in Upper Melbourne Avenue and the Short Hills Station District, which is very small. Business types. So if you look at this chart on the right, that's the one I'm going to be referring to the most. The chart reflects the eight categories that are shown on our website directory, as long as, as well as one category updated for the purposes of this report, which is under construction or opening plan. So those are ten properties that right now are anticipating tenants within the next month or two. As you can see from the circle chart, professional services, medical and food and drink represent seventy percent of all the businesses in the city, seventy percent. So this leads to the question of how do our policies reflect economic development realities? Melbourne Short Hills actually is a fairly strong office economy compared to other communities, right? We see it here. Medical is a growing industry nationally, regionally and locally, and we need to consider how we deal with that sector. Perhaps our governing body should consider addressing how to allow for more potential occupancies. For instance, downtown, medical uses are not permitted under the current zoning. So maybe that's something that is not reflective of reality. Maybe we need to think about changing zoning to allow for more medical uses in downtown because clearly that's a growing industry in our community. And that's the importance of analyzing this data, right? We start to learn what's really going on in the community. Secondly, along those lines, we discuss liquor licenses. We have sixty food and drink establishments in our community. And they all, we're not, shouldn't say all, but many of them would like the opportunity to have a liquor license. And obviously, they represent a very large sector. Go to the next slide. Slide will talk about the vacancy rate. A complicated chart. I'm going to get to it real simple. There are three hundred and twenty six total sites, which includes storefronts and second floor retail and office. We remove the large multi-tenant office spaces because that would sort of throw off the numbers, right? Because they are one building, they're one address, multiple tenants inside, it gets a little murky. So let's focus on that, these first floor as well as second floor. So there's three twenty six that are currently occupied or under construction. There are twenty seven total vacant sites in the town. Four of those are Ida related. So those are short term vacancies. Those aren't your long terms, right? These are ones that we expect will come back fairly quickly. So if you remove those four items, you're in, you end up with twenty three long term vacancies. And long term vacancies are really the cause of concern, right? Because the Ida vacancies would have been occupied today had it not been a natural disaster. So what do we do about those twenty three? So as you can see at the the bottom here, if you look at in totality, you take in the Ida vacancies were eight point three percent. If you remove the Ida vacancies and you just focus on long term, we're down to seven percent. Seven percent vacancy. Now that is a very healthy number, given the size of our city. So you want to move to the next slide? Vacancy rate per district. You can see from the bar graph, it's gone down since our last report in June, July. That is, it's gone down in Wyoming, it's gone down in downtown, it's gone down by eight percent on Upper Melbourne Avenue. One of our newest tenants, Tiger Schulman, was here today. It has gone up, but only because of a strange sort of anomaly in Short Hill Station. They had one tenant move from a ground floor to a second story. They had no vacancies. Now they've gone to one. So it kind of jumps up percentage wise, but it's it's really not as serious as you'd think. And then the same thing on Morris Turnpike, it went from two vacancies to five vacancies. But that is a fairly large district. So I think overall, you know, when you look at where we had problematic vacancies last last year, Wyoming, downtown and Upper Melbourne all have seen decreases since the last report. Then vacancy over time, you see here, it's a it's a very positive trajectory. Unlike your 401K, you want to see this line going down. And it is, it's going down significantly. In mid twenty twenty, the data that we collected, not I, but my predecessors, I suppose, collected was a vacancy rate of about sixteen percent. I've said before, not sure how accurate that number was, given the way the study was done, but it's certainly in that ballpark. Fifteen, fourteen, sixteen. At that point, it doesn't really matter. It's like saying, well, I I only have stage three cancer. It's not as bad as stage four. Eh, still pretty bad. The good news is, we've reduced it every time we've done this report. In June twenty twenty one, we were at nine point seven percent. That was the first report that I issued using the the data that I feel comfortable collecting. We've gone down two point seven percent to seven percent now. So I think we should all be very, very happy about the positive trajectory that we're seeing here. And the proof is in the pudding, because if you go to the next slide, these are all new businesses. On the left, these are all businesses that have opened in the last six months since we issued the report. That's one heck of a list. And then you also have the ten businesses that I mentioned that are either spoken for, like Mochi Donuts, that's opening soon, Springbone opening soon, or sites that are under development, like the former Charlie Browns, the former Riddle Shop on Upper Melbourne Avenue was recently purchased. So all very good news in that respect. Moving on to the next vacant buildings. This list is a little bit longer than I'd like it to be, but I think it was a lot longer six months ago. And so we're 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 chipping away at it. We have had some recent vacancies. Ms. Pasternak earlier mentioned Calico. Disappointed to see them leaving over on Morris Turnpike. But for the most part, these are either Ida vacancies, as you see noted, or or long term vacancies, vacancies that have been around for eighteen months, two years and even longer. We have some that have been vacant for five, six years. And so this list is really where we're going to focus our efforts in trying to get new potential tenants into these properties. And then reasons for the vacancy reduction. So the the most obvious one is that new businesses moved in. So the, the most obvious one is that new businesses moved in, right? That's pretty simple. Additionally, when businesses have decided to seek new, new locations, they're staying in town. And that's really encouraging. Unwind Boutique moved from downtown further up Milburn Avenue in downtown. Kika Stretch Studio moved from Short Hill Station with a larger space downtown. Dove Design Studio moved from a storefront to a second floor. And there's, there's a couple of other examples as well. I think the hurricane ITA support is huge. I think we kept a lot of businesses in this town that probably would have left. And so I think, you know, we'll pat ourselves on the back, we'll pat the TC on the back. And I think that was really, really important. I think it really helped keep this vacancy rate down. And I also think that, you know, we, we've created clarity. You know, I mentioned about the liquor licenses. We want to make sure that people know what to expect. That we're doing a good job of that between our office, the, the office of the administrator, many of the professionals. I think we're creating a very good communication system between new businesses and folks that are coming in that don't quite know what to expect when they move into a new community, that there's predictability, there's reliability here. And I think that helps encourage folks to want to actually plant their flag here. And then administratively, certain properties were removed from the assessment roles. Because they're no longer commercial properties, including some that are included, that were in the previous assessment role that are now included in the housing settlements. So the number was higher of tax lots last time because some of those properties have been removed. That's very natural for a city. Properties change use all the time, so they get removed. And then, of course, as I mentioned earlier, just continuing to clean up our role. You know, it's, it's a challenge to manage the, the information for five-hundred-plus businesses and, and all the owners. But I do it diligently and, you know, I'd rather have good records and, and accurate records than just wing it and say, yeah, we have X amount of businesses. So that number will, will probably go down and continue as, as we just go and clarify our information. But I'd rather good information than that. So with that, I'll take any questions from the board.
Steve, we were talking about prints, you know, print advertising before you touched on it. Is there any opportunity to co-op some print ads as part of our strategy? Maybe for the holidays, for the businesses where, where, where? I know some towns, you know, advertise, you know, come, come to our town. I wonder if there's an opportunity, because print is, is, is relative, is less expensive than it used to be. And I wonder if that would be an effective advertising tool for our businesses where maybe people could pay, you know, pay something. You know, we could underwrite some of it and, and, you know, and have a kind of co-op. Co-op a, a marketing plan or part of the marketing plan, you know, to do print as opposed to digital.
Yeah, absolutely. As I said, that was something that came out of my CIT directors meeting. I think there's a couple of local publications that are actually offering discounted rates to nonprofits and CITs specifically around the holidays. So when we have someone in the marketing position, that's something I'm going to test them with, is to, to find some of those publications. And I think it'd be great. I think that, you know, we have a very good social media rollout. We've got a great readership of our email blasts. Our open rate is over fifty percent, which is like unheard of. But print is another medium. And so we know there's opportunities. And yes, that's something that I, I prioritize going into the small businesses.
Oh, this is great. I think it's all great news. I, I, I keep thinking about, there's probably no way to extract our impact on this, how much influence we've had versus natural economic trends. But, you know, I'd love to pat ourselves on the back. I, I just, that's, okay, we did, I know we did a good job.
I don't think we've hurt. You know, I, I can speak anecdotally, right? The businesses, they contact us, they feel confident that this community embraces business. I hear that. I just had a woman come in two days ago, it's opening a small business. And she was floored. She's like, I didn't know the town offered this service. This is amazing, you know, this helps me through. We give her the, the new business startup hack, we give her the excitement is coming poster. We, you know, we, we actually started working on a project that's going to be perfect for the, the Goldberg's Alleyway. So, and, and I just think that it's been, it's been very helpful to businesses to know that there's a resource here. And, you know, just take Tenino cigars, for example. You know, we put thirty-plus people in that place two weeks after it opened. They would have never done that on his own. You know, and I think, and those were local business people, right? So those are people who are meeting each other, they're also going to a new location. All, all the different strategies that we put together, I think have been very effective. And it's tough to calculate on a dollar value. But I think, you know, everyone I speak to seems to, they all say the same thing, they feel more energy. That's the word they always use, energy.
That's great.
Thanks for putting this all together.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, thank you for helping me because most of this data comes from that directory that we put together.
Thank you.
I've got a couple more things. Is Andrew on the call yet? He is, okay, perfect. You should probably just note that, Tracy.
That does move us to potential action items?
Yes, and we have enough votes now for a forum.
Yes.
So attachment seven in your packets, it says twenty-two spring cleaning and town projects. Just want to go over this, nothing here is set in stone. All I'm asking for today is just approval to go out and solicit some estimates on this work. So just to take you through it. A lot of this is tied into the SEDA event on April thirtieth. So I, I mentioned we want to go out and improve some of the tree pits. I'd like to do a power washing of the sidewalks on Upper Milburn Avenue. They're in pretty bad shape. And so we can get a professional power washing company out here, clean all those sidewalks, especially prior to the, uh. The sidewalk permit season, when a lot of those places are going to want to put out chairs and tables. We can clean it up very nicely. There's just a couple of, of small things around town that I'd like to clean up. You know, putting out new garbage cans that actually match. We've got about six different styles of garbage can throughout town. And then I'm also working with the town on a couple of things. Vicky, who's not here, mentioned the speakers. I've talked to DPW. We think maybe half of the speakers work, maybe, and work is kind of in quotes. And I didn't know this was possible. They actually run it out of the basement of Town Hall with a CD player. So to say it's antiquated would be gracious. So we're going to work together, myself and DPW, to probably remove all of them, just because they're so out of date. And potentially purchase a new Wi-Fi system so that we can play music in a much more modern way. And then we could play it all throughout the year. It doesn't just have to be at the holidays and, and can be managed remotely. At the next TC meeting, there's going to be a, a resolution, actually, March, I think March first. There'll be a resolution to run a sixty-day parking pilot program for downtown. This is something that came out of our parking study. Reducing the parking on Milburn Avenue between Town Hall and the, and Mil, and Main Street, down to one hour for a period of sixty days. I want to experiment with it and see if perhaps we get more turnover and get more pedestrian traffic. Because cars aren't parking there for two hours, they'll be parking there for one hour instead. Working on some signage projects with the town, working on some parking improvements. And Tracy had mentioned actually that nobody knows that it's free parking for fifteen minutes when you come into town because there's no signs that say it. So we're going to work on installing some signs to let motorists know that when they're actually pulling up, they do have to go to the meter to plug in their license plate, but fifteen minutes is free. So all, all kind of, I, I call it housekeeping. But, you know, it's a lot of little things that haven't been done for a long time. And the CIT has the ability to work with the town to do it.
The other thing that, oh, sorry, Tracy. To mention that the residential annual parking pass also, I think, you know, should be mentioned to encourage residents to shop. I don't know, is everybody aware of what that is? I, I, tell, yeah, you want to talk about it for a minute?
Sure.
I don't know, I know, I, I, I. Or Jesse, you could help me. What's the pricing on it, I, for the annual permit?
Check the pricing, I think it's in the ballpark of fifty dollars.
Yeah, thoroughly sixty, yeah.
Right? It's between fifty and seventy-five, I think. But you prepay at the beginning of the year. And then you can park as many times as you want within the hourly restrictions in each street space and lot space. And so it basically incentivizes you to make sure that you're thinking about shopping when you are going out and making your purchases.
Great.
Is that new or is that?
Yeah.
It was presented to us. Can, can I ask one thing? I just put a request for one more little item on here. The, um, the parking kiosks, the ones that are glass-inclined. I know at one time we had been talking about it and decided to defer putting lots of big decals up. I would love just to see a cleaning of them. Like, I don't know who's responsible for cleaning them, but there's like old tape on there and.
Is it a vendor or is it the town?
The tape is my bad.
But just, but like, does anyone, is there like a contract for someone to even just like clean the glass on a certain basis? Because it is the first thing people see when they come to town. And I was hoping we could just put up some type of simple sign, an explorer sign with a QR code that links right to our directory. I mean, the same way you're getting the directory link on the app, to just have a simple poster with something that's weather-resistant with a QR code that people could just literally put their phone up and pull up the directory.
So when we leave later, I'm going to show you one thing that I did as a little test.
Okay, cool.
Yes, it, it may be good. As for cleaning though, that's somebody else's job.
Yeah, and I think the Department of Public Works can take care of it.
Okay, it would be nice. I say it is literally the first thing people see, and I think it does make a difference.
And Steve, if we're going to clean, if we're going to spend any money to clean the sidewalks and I guess Upper Milburn Avenue, is that what I'm saying? I mean, I also think that maybe there's an opportunity if there, if anything isn't disrepair. You know, that, that we work with DPW so we don't just clean it and leave it in disrepair. I think some of those sidewalks, you know.
Are safety issues.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there are issues. So maybe when, if we do that, that'd be great to, you know, coordinate with me or DPW. I want to, you know, there's an opportunity there, I think. Make sure, make sure we do, we, we take care of our, you know, sidewalks if they're disrepair.
Okay. Next item, Jesse, do you have the cube presentation that I sent you? Okay, so just, um, this is going to be super quick because there's no action take right now. Again, my, my counterpart in Cranford had recommended to me that there's a vendor that she uses called Think Outside the Cube. And they do sort of unique public space projects. And so there were three things that I was hoping to do this year. I'm waiting on some sponsorship opportunities to come in. If I secure the sponsorships, I'm going to come back to you guys with a, a request to proceed with these three items. Maybe in this iteration, maybe not, we'll have to have a more formal discussion. But I wanted to just at least put this on your radar as something that I'm looking for. But again, no action to take this evening. The first one would be to build a selfie booth. I think this would be pretty cool. It, it's modular, so it can be broken down and moved throughout the town. Perfect outside a hair salon, nail salon, you know, restaurant. And so the idea, Jesse, you can just kind of flip through. It'd be pretty large. There's an opportunity to have multiple backdrops or one backdrop that you can change out with the vendor. That's all TBD. But the idea would be that you're walking down the street, you see this selfie box, it'll be branded for Explore Milburn. And we'll get people to take pictures, post them on Instagram and help promote the brand. You can continue, Jesse. And you can go through. Next item is bocce ball court. So we do have a three-month closure of Main Street, which has been hugely successful. We did program it this year with our Games on Main program. Most of that was lost in the hurricanes, so I have to go buy all that again. But this is actually pretty cool. This would be modular as well. So this would be brought in on, in pieces and assembled, and then it could be broken down after the three-month period. TBD on, on how this would be laid out, whether it's turf or something like that. But would allow folks to play bocce ball while they have their dinner. Which I think if you're eating a pizza at Fiamma, it feels like you're in Naples. And then if we go on to the next thing, this one's super important to me, creating a bandstand. So obviously, the music program on the Main Street pedestrian mall has been wonderful. Last year, we were kind of putting things together urgently. Now we have the opportunity where we could actually build a really nice stage, again modular. So this could be brought in by the DPW, broken down and stored. This would have also, if you go to the next slide, Jesse, and I think the next one. A back wall. So right now, when you're looking at the performers, you see the jersey barriers behind it. This would have the ability to go behind the stage, look much more professional. We could put up lights on it if necessary, certainly could have our branding and the branding of any sponsors. So we have a little bit of a ways to go on this. I do think we're going to get the sponsorship dollars to do this. But I think these are three pretty innovative, useful projects. So knock on wood, I'll be back here in a month or two asking you guys for permission because we'll have that supplemental funding. And this, this is not something that I would move out of our budget. This would have to come in through supplemental funding.
And I, I could just say, these look really neat, right? So you're, the Founder's Day event, you bring a selfie booth in there. I mean, it's, if we can get a lot of use out of some of these pieces, I think, for many of our events, I, I like.
This is the stuff I think about late at night. You know, I'm like, what we really need is a bocce court in the street.
I, I try to sleep at different, but I'm impressed.
Thank you.
And Steve, that stage, you know, they have a iteration of that in Rockefeller Center. Where this, where there is a, where there is a backdrop to the stage. So you have the stage, you have like a kind of a wall, you know, kind of closing it off. And then behind the wall, there's actually a seat. So, so I want to, I'll show, show you a picture. It may be a way to even maximize, maximize that a little more as, as I've seen in New York.
This also has expandable wings. So on both sides, you can make it longer by two feet on each side. So if we have a larger band, all it is, flip it up. So that's, that's the cool part about the modular. Yeah. Two action items that we do have to take a vote on. You look at attachment nine in your packets, this is the advisory committee. We did receive thirteen requests to participate. This is the advisory committee that's in our bylaws that we refreshed this year. The goal is to have one, at least one representative from each district. You see that that has been accomplished here. We'll certainly prioritize bringing on non-downtown districts for the other two seats. We can take action on this tonight. And then as more people potentially join, if people drop off, we can kind of continue to refresh this list. There's nothing in our bylaws that says, you know, that we can't continue to update it as we go. However, everybody appointed here, assuming that they choose to serve, will be appointed for one calendar year. So I've spoken to each of these folks, they all are very interested. Some of them, we have previous relationships with, they volunteered for events, they participated in committees. Some of them are new businesses, some of them are sitting here. So he may not want to do it after tonight. But I, I think, you know, getting back to the point of, you know, what is the, what is the goal of this group? It's to really try to look at policy issues and, and look at trying to attract businesses. And I think this is a very good diverse group of people. And so I would ask tonight for you to approve this slate as presented. And I'll come back to the group if I can fill those two additional seats. But in just a month, with the call out, we've received thirteen folks that want to participate.
Great.
I, I think this is very admirable, got boots on the ground of existing, existing successful businesses. Some new, some old, and I, I think this is very admirable.
It's nice to see all the districts represented. And I think also, seeing the way you laid out the vacancy study. It obviously wouldn't make sense to have three people from each district, when the districts are such different sizes. So I think you should also keep in mind, I say, certainly there are some districts, like especially Morris Turnpike, would be nicer to have more representation, given that there's a pretty large. That's the main one that looks like it would be good to have more people from.
Agreed.
Steve said, is there one-year terms for everybody?
It's a one-year term.
Okay.
We would need a roll call vote. You would need a motion, a motion and a roll call.
Yeah, yeah, so the motion would be, we're approving the appointment of, of each of these people. That isn't to the advisory committee for one year. And as, as a group, you don't, I don't think we need to go individually.
Just a clarification, is it this calendar year until the end of two thousand twenty-two, just to be clear?
So it's a one-year term commencing on January first, but we did not have bylaws in place on January first. And ending on December thirty-first of that year. So this would end at the thirty-first of, nothing else.
So pro-rata for this year, I guess.
So effective essentially tonight through December thirty-first.
Do, do I hear a motion?
A motion.
Second, anybody second?
I can't, I, I cannot second, right?
And a roll call vote, please.
Tracy Cat Flavine, yes, Andrew Morgan?
Yes.
Richard Wasserman?
Yes.
Steven Weiner?
Yes.
The next item, and this is the last one. And while we moved pretty quickly tonight, to be honest, covered a lot of ground in two hours. So I presented our bylaws amendments to the Township Committee last Wednesday. Um, I gave a twenty, twenty-five minute presentation. Uh, the TC was very engaged, asked a number of pertinent questions. They accepted all of our amendments except for one. Um, and so the way that the process works is they have the, uh, ability to, uh, make that request. It then comes back to this body, and if you approve the bylaws with that language, they then become effective. Um, so the language change that they asked for, um, is in section one point zero two, offices. Um, originally, we had proposed, and I'll read the entire paragraph, just I think it's good for clarity's sake, since this is the only change. The principal offices of the corporation shall be initially located in the Melbourne Town Hall. Thereafter, it may be located in such location or locations. Then we added, within the boundaries of the special improvement district, including locations owned or occupied by the Township of Melbourne, as the Board of Trustees may herein designate with the consent of the Township Committee. Um, the consensus from the Township Committee was that they only wanted the offices in Town Hall. Um, and so the new language that you are being requested to approve tonight is as follows. The principal office of the corporation shall be located in the Melbourne Town Hall. That's it, everything else was accepted by the TC, um, per our request. So, uh, it's my recommendation that we make a motion tonight, uh, to approve these amendments as I've stated them. Uh, they will then become effective immediately.
Steve, I could speak to the, uh, the consensus, uh, on the TC. Uh, when, when Mayor Jackie and I, uh, founded, uh, this organization, I think, yeah, I think the thinking was that we wanted the, uh, executive director to be, uh, you know, in Town Hall and the mix of, uh, our township officials, um, to, uh, to be able to help, you know, uh, people that call, you know, whether there's a zoning issue, a landing issue, whatever it might be. Um, and I think there was a lot, there was some thinking, even though, even though, even though where it comes from is that we have five districts, it might be nice at one point to make sure we have represent, representative office space, maybe, you know, maybe elsewhere. But, but the original thinking was that we wanted, um, you know, our office here, you know, where it's accessible, Steve was regular hours, our staff is here. And also, of course, to, uh, save, you know, to, uh, have the efficiency of saving all of that rent that we're not paying, um, that we're not paying. So that was some of the feedback, and, um, you know, maybe in the future, we can relook at it, but I think it does make sense.
Yeah, I do remember that discussion, uh, early on, that was the intent.
Yeah.
And I concur, and I recommend that we accept that change.
Any other questions? Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Uh, any one second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Tracy Cat Levine, yes, Andrew Morgan.
Yes.
Richard Wasserman.
Yes.
Steven Weiner.
Yes. Mr. Grillo, anything else?
No, that's all chairman, uh, now we just need to read the resolution to go into executive. I'm sorry, to read the rec, uh, resolution, and then, um, there may be action taken when we come out, just for the public's notice.
Okay. Um, let me get to that resolution.
I would say fifteen to twenty minutes.
Yeah, so at this point, the agenda will be moving into executive session to discuss, as indicated on the agenda, personnel matters and, uh, contract discussion, and.
My, my counsel suggests that I refrain, uh, rephrase, uh, that the time could take as long as it takes.
Yes, yes. Um, uh, in the resolution, the form of resolution was included in in the board packet. I'll just read that for you. This is resolution authorizing executive session for the Melbourne Short Hills Business Organization, Inc., whereas the Open Public Meetings Act provides for the exclusion of the public during the discussion of certain matters, and whereas prior to the exclusion of the public from a council meeting, is required that the Melbourne Short Hills Business Organization, Inc., Special Improvement Board of Trustees, adopt a resolution stating the general nature of the subject to be discussed and stating as precisely as possible the time when the minutes of the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public. And whereas this body is about to consider a matter which falls within the purview of NJSA ten, four through twelve, and can properly exclude the public from such discussions, now therefore be it resolved that the Melbourne Short Hills Business Organization, Inc., Special Improvement Board of Trustees, shall enter into a closed session to consider the following matters. Personnel matters, but the marketing and events manager, and a contract discussion about website maintenance. It is further resolved, the minutes of said discussion shall be made public as soon as the matter under discussion is no longer of a confidential nature. So do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Any, any second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Tracy Catherine, yes, Andrew Morgan.
Yes.
Richard Wasserman.
Yes.
Steven Weiner.
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Is there a... I gotta, I just have to tell...
You're very busy, you're the chairman.
I, I know, it's like, okay. Yep, yep, we are back in public session, having concluded our executive session. There are two items, as we discussed, the personnel matters in connection with the marketing and events manager. And so what we need is an authorization by the board to execute an agreement with Black River Design Company. And substantially, the contract is in substantially the form reviewed and discussed by the board, as we just did in the executive session. Do I hear motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Was that Andrew?
That was he.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Tracy Katz Levine, yes. Andrew Morgan.
Yes.
Richard Wasserman.
Yes.
Stephen Weiner.
Yes, and the second item that we should just highlight is confirming that, that whether there's a consensus of the board to authorize our executive director to begin negotiations with New Frontier in connection with maintaining our website, the SIDS website. So any, any questions about that? I don't think we need a motion, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I see there's another item here, board comments, volunteer assignments, and adjournment. Does anyone have...
You can make an adjournment if you'd like.
Okay, any comments, board? No?
Good work, everybody.
No? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
All in favor.
Oh, sorry, all in favor. Anybody opposed?
No.
Perfect, we now we're...